We expect that there will be a lot of opposition. We expect a lot of public officials and public bodies to mention their opposition and make speeches. We expect a lot of members of the public to do so. And we hope to rectify some of the holes in the record on this case which were created when key documents disappeared from the solid waste file in DEQ.
Is that how they were able to get the site permit?
Yes, there, when Judge Redman was appointed to make this decision in place of Dr. Comple, who was the DEQ secretary at the time, he of course comes into this entirely fresh. He's a judge who expects to confine his attention to the documents and evidence before him. And mysteriously, the most important piece of our evidence and some of the other most important pieces were never sent to him and in fact have been lost by DEQ. That includes an entire public hearing like this one.
Waste Management Louisiana, formerly American Waste and Pollution Control Company, a Louisiana corporation, is wholly owned subsidiary of Waste Management Incorporated, the leading provider of integrated solid waste services in North America. Waste Management owns and operates and consulting services employing 14,000 environmental engineers, staff, and other scientists dedicated to protecting our environment. Through its nine operating subsidiaries, we employ more than 67,000 people in 48 states and 22 foreign countries. We operate more than 100 material recovery facilities to collect newspapers, corrugated containers, glass, aluminum, and metal cans, and plastic. Through our international network of brokers and manufacturing concerns, we are creating markets for recyclables with our partners Stone Container Corporation and American National Can. Together, we market 1.8 million tons of paper, 10 million
My name is Sidney May Durand. I'm a representative for District 46 in the state legislature. I've been involved in solid waste management for over 17 years. First as a member of the St. Martin Parish Police Jury, then as a member of LURDA, and now as a member of the Natural Resource Committee in the legislature. I've also been a member of the Tri Parish Solid Waste Commission since it was formed by LURDA. Finally, I'm also a member of the Evangeline Economic District, which has jurisdiction to do planning for solid waste disposal in this region. With all of this experience, I have learned that though solid waste disposal is a difficult and sensitive problem in the state, solutions are available, which includes a combination of recycling, new technologies such as composting and landfilling. The best way to find these solutions is to put the process into the hands of local people who understand both that the garbage has to go somewhere and that the solution has to safeguard the health, safety, and quality of life of their families, neighbors, and their own children and grandchildren. Solid waste is no different from anything else that government does. It works best when answers come from people instead of being imposed from outside Louisiana. The machinery is in place to do it this way, in the form of regional planning districts such as the Evangeline District. But that isn't the way that Waste Management chose to do things. They never consulted the local people in choosing a site, in determining the size of the landfill that was needed, in determining the service area or where the water would be discharged. When they found that St. Martin Parish opposed their proposal, they simply went to court to frustrate the will of the police jury that represented the local people. They claimed that they offered the regional solution to the solid waste problem, but they have never even approached the Evangeline Economic District, which has the jurisdiction from the state to do regional solid waste planning. Listen to the people. All three parish governments are opposed. The city of St. Martinville is opposed. The city of Broussard opposed. Youngsville is also opposed. Parks is opposed. Brobridge, the mayor of New Iberia, is opposed. The St. Martin Parish School Board is opposed. The Catholic Diocese, the Episcopal Diocese, I am opposed. By denying this permit, you will show the people of Louisiana and their representatives to control our own future instead of having us steamrolled by an international group headquartered in Chicago. I urge you to deny the permit and to do so quickly so that we can get on with the rest of our life. Thank you.
My name is Thomas Nelson. I'm the police jury representative of District 2, which happened to be the area where Waste Management wants to locate this landfill. Five years ago, DEQ found it proper to deny a siding which was called Cade 1. Five years later, in fact, it was approximately three years and something ago, a permit was issued for Cade 2, which is actually no more than two miles away. The Chico Aquifer is even closer to the water. No matter what is denied, they keep coming at us. They have the money, they have the resources, we don't. I'd say if this site is denied, they're gonna keep coming at us. And their reasoning is they're not looking at what's best for the area, they're not looking at the land use, they're not looking that Cypress Bay is located on one side, Cooley LaSalle is on the opposite end. What they're looking for is the closest point between three different municipalities, St. Martinville, New Iberia, and Lafayette. We're gonna ask you all to deny this water discharge permit. This site is actually located 35 feet approximately from the Chico Aquifer. It's being built on rolling hills. I don't know if ever any one of you have been in that area or anywhere in the Cade area, the area I represent. I'm not a geologist, I have no experience whatsoever as a geologist, but I can tell you one thing, we have to fill holes, we have to dig drainage ditches, and every one of those rolling hills seeps. If you have a home next to a rolling hill, I promise you, especially in the winter months, you're not gonna cut your grass. I can take any one of you tomorrow morning and show you a dozen of rolling hills. We call them sewers, that the water that comes out is actually a spring. It's an artificial spring, it's actually a filtration of water through a rolling hill. And they say they have a technology to put lining and whatnot. If anyone of you know how a crawfish work, is gonna board that lining. And the water's gonna seep. But let's not use a crawfish. You might not be there, I might not be there, and our children may not be there, but eventually Mother Nature will destroy that lining. I don't care how long it takes. And if any man can tell me he can build a line to prevent water from going through in years to come, I may not be there, but I might be come back alive to see that. So, I'm not gonna stay, I'm not prepared to make a long speech, but we're gonna ask you all to reconsider. Look at the evidence. Look at the people involved. You can look around and look, we have some elected official just about from anywhere in the tri parish, and they're telling you all, we don't want it. And I don't believe we live in Russia, I believe we live in America. And if this permit is allowed, we may have to move to Russia. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Don Cravens. I represent the 24th Senatorial District, which includes a large portion of St. Martin Parish, as well as Lafayette Parish and part of Iberia Parish. I'm not gonna be repetitious because I believe that there are many other people that wish to speak tonight. I certainly want to thank those of you that came from DEQ to listen, and I hope that you are listening. But I think the message has already been given. I think the crowd speaks for itself. And quite frankly, it baffles me as to why a company or a corporation would want to come into a neighborhood where they are not welcomed. And I hope that you will relay the message. I hope that you will deny the permit. And I can tell you today that the war on waste has just begun as far as I'm concerned, and I applaud the people who've worked so hard to stop it up to this point. But as of today, they've recruited a new soldier, and I'm gonna fight it with everything that I've got. Thank you.
As a lawyer, it's gonna be difficult to talk for less than five minutes, but I think I can do it. Many people have asked me what I personally feel about the Cade 2 landfill. And unfortunately, I have a position as an attorney, and I have to honor that position and represent the St. Martin Parish Police Jury as an attorney. But let me say, since this is not a legal matter, legal hearing, that I'm personally opposed to the landfill in Cade. I'm an avid fisherman in this area, and I want my kids to grow up and enjoy southwest Louisiana, enjoying the fishing that I've been able to do over the years. So personally, I'm opposed to it, while professionally, I have a job to do, and unfortunately, not everybody agrees with some of the positions or opinions I've rendered. But I'm here to tell you that the St. Martin Parish Police Jury is the only body that should be able to sit here and tell you what is best for the people of St. Martin Parish. St. Martin Parish has been at this battle for several years, and they've told state government, let's let the local governing body have a say-so on what's going on. Unfortunately, the Supreme Court and other courts have not seemed fit to allow us to do what they really want to do. As an attorney, I know that judges make wrong decisions all of the time. And I believe that Judge Redman made a wrong decision in this case, and hopefully, the First Circuit will see that and overturn the permit issued to Waste Management. Is with that in mind that I ask you to not grant this water discharge permit until that process has taken place. To do so will put St. Martin Parish government and the community in an impossible position. If Waste Management is allowed to go forward and start building their landfill, if this water discharge permit is granted, and at some point in time, the permitting process is upset or overturned, it may put the St. Martin Parish Police Jury in a legal battle that they cannot win. It will allow Waste Management to use the fact that they've invested large sums of money to say the police jury may owe them money as a result of action granting them the permit. So as their legal representative, I'm asking you to delay granting a water discharge permit until all the legal battles have been waged regarding the permit itself. Let's let that be decided before we allow Waste Management to go forward with construction. Second, we would request that you give the St. Martin Parish Police Jury, who is the governing authority in this parish where this landfill is to be placed, at least 60 days from this date, to respond in writing to your governmental body with expert information that we were unable to obtain for tonight. I think it would be impossible for any expert to get up here in five minutes and tell you all the things that they may feel is wrong with the water discharge permit application. I don't think it's fair to the people of St. Martin Parish, and I don't think it's fair to you to simply allow somebody five minutes that has that kind of information to report to you. So I would ask that you give us 60 days. So that we can have experts whom we've spoken to, but who told us they could not be prepared tonight, they would like to be able to review all the information provided at the hearing tonight, as well as other information, so that they can represent the people of St. Martin Parish before you as a governmental body. Last thing I'd like to say is, I'm a prosecutor by heart. That's what my job is. I represent and advise the police jury, but basically, my job is to try criminals. And in the criminal system, the criminal gets the benefit of the doubt. But it seems like unfortunately, the system in this case is not willing to give the same benefit of the doubt to the people of St. Martin Parish and all the surrounding parishes. It seems like the doubt is going against the people. It's not working in their favor. If you've got experts on both sides, one saying it's bad and one saying it's good, it seems like there's a doubt somewhere there, but yet it seems like St. Martin Parish and the people are not getting the benefit of that doubt. So I would ask you to simply give the same benefit that a criminal gets, and certainly, St. Martin Parish and all the people deserve better than that. Give them the benefit of the doubt and deny this water discharge permit and return the parish of St. Martin to its local people and the local governing authorities so they can govern as they should. Thank you.
I would urge you to call the number on the screen and voice your opinion about the Cade 2 landfill. I don't know if you're aware of just what this thing is about, but let me just give you a little brief insight about Cade 2. It's a dump, a garbage dump, that is being proposed for our area. It would be placed right over the Chico Aquifer. I understand that there's only three feet of clay that would separate the dump from the aquifer. So I think it's very, very important that you call, and let's let Waste Management know that we do not want a dump in our neighborhood. We don't want our water system polluted. We don't want it poisoned, not only for our selves, but for our children. I would urge you to call the number on the screen and make your voices heard. It's time for action.
Keith Colley, I'm on the City Council for the city of Brobridge. I hadn't planned to speak tonight, but being as you called my name up, I'm not gonna pass this up. It just amazes me that this situation has gotten to the point it's gotten after having heard the presentation made by Dr. Locke. I mean, it's almost beyond words that we would have to come to meeting after meeting after meeting to attempt to fight back this corporation that wants to force something on the people of St. Martin Parish that they don't want. And I think that any entity that would allow that situation to continue is an embarrassment to all of the people of Louisiana. And I hope that those of you who are in a position to make that decision realize that, that Louisiana has a lot of good things going for it, but it does have its share of embarrassments. This would simply add to that list. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I'd like to say, which is an impardon, my name is Palmer Johnson. I represent District 2 and on the school board. And that is why I'm here, gentlemen, because we're dealing with an element that is here, we're dealing with an element that is yet to come. We're dealing with the mind of our children, and if we will continue to let Waste Management come here and tell us this is best, after hearing Dr. White several times, who is a geologist? I'm not a geologist. I don't have all the technical, all the technicality, but I'm not stupid and Mr. Nelson and a crawfish. And you know, most of us here in southwest Louisiana, we love to suck on crawfish even though we know what they do and what they won't do as far as waste. But the point I want to make is that, that liner that they speak of, it reminds me, not that I want to discredit, you know, those 28 missile that we sent over to Saddam Hussein at $1,000,000 cost. I don't know how much is that liner gonna cost per inch. I just hope that it has more effect than those bombs did. Because those mine that we're gonna allow to be destroyed, and those bodies that we're gonna allow to be filtered with cancers and all these chemicals that'll poison the water, I mean, you have a decision to make. And I don't believe that we, as a people in this area, could continue coming here day after day, day after day, asking and begging. If it's gonna take anything, I'd get on my knees and ask you when you get back. I'm gonna ask you this, you know, please, for God's sake, you know, just have a heart and think about our children. You know, there's been many suggestions about the clay and what it's going to do, you know, to this parish. You know, let it not kill our people. We have people that don't have the resources to get up and move from where this thing is gonna be located. Not only that, the water that it's going to affect is not only gonna kill the people in the Cade area, it's gonna affect this whole area. And we don't have enough marticians, and I'm a martician, and I don't want the bodies. I can assure you that. I don't want the bodies, really. We cannot afford to let these people come here and destroy us. You know, if it means paying more to get it where it's safe, I don't mean putting it on somebody else that it's gonna cause them some harm. We don't want to go around killing people in America. This is the greatest country there is. There's nothing greater than America. So why shouldn't we come to some table rather than trying to solve everything in the court or he who has the big bucks call the shot? It shouldn't be that way. Let's do what is right for our children. We asking ourselves, why is our kid turning to drugs? Because we as adults are not setting the example. You know, we gotta get all these crooks and all these unjustices going on straightened up. So I'm asking you here on my knees that you please don't let Waste Management put this where they're gonna kill anybody, not only in this parish. We don't need this kind of stuff. If they need a ticket to get back to Chicago, New York, I'll sacrifice my opinion, give it to them.
My name is Cliff Oakway. I'm the mayor of the city of New Iberia, but that's not really important. What is important is, I need to disagree a little bit with what Phil said. He said that this ought to be left to the decision-makers in St. Martin Parish. That's fine if the consequences were unique to St. Martin Parish. The consequences go beyond St. Martin Parish, and they very much affect the people of the city of New Iberia and Iberia Parish, and I think we have some, you know, have some say in this whole thing. I think your job is very easy, gentlemen. I think that there's no change in what the Clean Water Act asked for back in the early 70s. That's how far back I go with water. You know, it is very clear the Clean Water Act said that we ought to do whatever we can to enhance and to improve water quality. That's it. You're gonna hear a lot of things tonight, a lot of people gonna testify to different things. You're gonna hear about technological advances, you're gonna hear about recycling company with a heart of gold, you're gonna hear about chemical analysis, the likes of which doesn't exist anywhere else, you're gonna hear even probably about awards for the proper colored trucks and that type of stuff. You're gonna hear minimize, you're gonna hear limit, and you're gonna hear hold down. But you're not gonna hear improved water. You're not gonna hear that. I believe that if you can't ensure or guarantee that the water quality in this area is going to improve or be enhanced as a result of this project, then you have no choice but to deny this permit. Now I told you at the outset that I was a mayor, and I told you that wasn't important. What I will tell you is important, I'm also a cancer survivor. And if this is an economical decision, if this is a decision based on economics, then think very seriously about the fact that my cancer to date has cost $125,000. Multiply that by the number of people that will end up with something as a result of this thing, and I think your decision is clear and it's over.
Mr. Givens, I'd like to thank you for coming and giving us a chance to speak again about Cade 2. I've got a few comments, but I guess maybe we can shortcut all this and try to find out somebody in the crowd by maybe their raising of their hand. Who is for Cade 2 and who is for the granting of a discharge permit? May I, may I further clarify that question? Are they paid consultants of Waste Management? Further, may I clarify that even further and to say there are participants in environmental genocide. I've been fighting this for six or seven years. I made the statement before, if I had to hire a third party, disinterested party, professional, to find the absolute worst location for a landfill, it would be Cade 2. So long as I'm involved in government and have a handle on the direction of the waste stream, I can assure you, if Cade 2 is permitted and allowed to go forward, the town of Broussard, and I also ask all the other municipalities, mayors, presidents, the ones that are involved that can direct the waste stream, to make sure that they direct the waste stream away from Cade 2. Again, I hope I haven't come over too strong, but I think that the audience feels very strong about it as I do, and I ask you to really give them every consideration because I, I'm just very upset that Waste Management can do what they've done to us, and we really had no say so. Thank you.
My name is Arrow Romo Romero. I reside at 208 Lucerne Drive in New Iberia, Louisiana. Besides being sheriff of Iberia Parish, I am recognized by the courts as an expert in the field of plumbing and have taught the aquifer to my students, so I'm familiar with it. Like to preface my remarks to Waste Management's, if you had any intentions of sending me financial contributions for my election, keep your money, I just want a clean place to raise my kids. Sir, I don't know if you had the opportunity, five years ago, they built a new road at Freshwater Bayou, which is near Pecorn Island, and they had this new lifesaving liner that was supposed to last forever and stop the water from going through, five years ago. You go to Freshwater Bayou now, the crawfish must have gotten it. That liner's not there, sir. I would tell you that God created the aquifer. I don't think man should play with it. The aquifer is the water we drink in New Iberia. Humans, no human can guarantee The aquifer is the water we drink in New Iberia. Humans, no human can guarantee to you, sir, what human makes will not fail. Only God can do that. There's not a human here that can guarantee to you that that liner will work. On behalf of all the people here, I ask you, sir, to deny this permit. And to Waste Management, we not opposed to you having a site. We are opposed to that site. That site. Thank you.
My name is Tim Micho. I'm a member of the Lafayette Parish Council. The district that I represent is on the southeast corner of Lafayette Parish. Some of my constituents who elected me live less than a half a mile away from the Cade Two, proposed Cade Two landfill site. I'd like to make a, just throw out a little information first, basically for the benefit of the public and at the same time towards the DEQ staff. Some of the toxins listed in the permit application, oil and grease chloride, sulfates, ammonia, magnesium, nitrate plus, arsenic, barium, cadmium, chromium, cyanide. Supposedly, these things are gonna be measured at a, as often as, as these, as the Waste Management Company sees fit to ensure that these chlorides will be kept out of the waters, La Salle, Cooley, eventually going into the Vermillion Bayou. But can you assure me 100% that these toxins will not get into the Vermillion River and further pollute the waters that we have now? I don't think that you can. In the statutes which are, set up how you should permit a landfill, one of the items in it states that the office, talking about DEQ, may choose at its discretion to require a more in-depth report of violations and compliance for the applicant covering any law permit or order concerning pollution. And I think you would be well advised to require an in-depth report on some of the permit violations. And finally, I would like to read a letter from the parish president of Lafayette, Mr. Walter Como. He sends, he cannot make it tonight because of a previous engagement. The letter goes out to the state of Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality. Dear sirs, as president of the Lafayette Parish Government, I am again asking DEQ to take steps that will effectively deny the issuance of the proposed Cade landfill water discharge permit. The Lafayette Parish Administration again wishes to announce to the Department of Environmental Quality that it continues to oppose the siding of the landfill at the present siding cade. The Chico aquifer, being the sole source aquifer for the entire Acadiana area, must be protected. Since there is less than 100% assurance that the Cade landfill will never leak, and that there is no proof that the discharge from the landfill will always be within required state standards, DEQ is again urged to deny this last permit As a parish councilman, we make decisions concerning, which affect 150,000 people that reside in Lafayette Parish. That's a lot of people. And as long as I'm in office and I'm pretty sure that I could just about speak for the rest of the group that I reside with, I could not, in good faith, direct any of the waste from Lafayette Parish to the Cade, Cade Two landfill if it were so in operation. And the message that I bring to you finally, from the people of Lafayette Parish, loud and clear, is to deny this permit. Thank you.
I want to thank you all from the DEQ for coming here. And mostly, I want to thank all of these people for showing up because I think these are the citizens that are concerned. And these people need to be thanked for coming to this meeting, this hearing. I want to say that the town council in Broussard has passed a resolution opposing the permit. I think the vast majority of citizens that I spoke to oppose having the landfill in the area. And now, I want to say that we, not only in Broussard, but this whole Acadiana area, not just Iberia Parish and Lafayette Parish and St. Martin Parish, but we're not a nomadic type people. We don't jump up and move around the country. Most of us have roots here. My grandfather was born in St. Martinville, raised in Broussard and lived in Lafayette most of his life. So we're not a type of people that's gonna just jump up and leave because someone moves in and destroys our water supply, which the Chico aquifer, from what I understand, goes much further than just Lafayette, St. Martin and Iberia Parish. This can be very detrimental to all of the lives in all of Acadiana. And I'd like to say to you people that I think our founding fathers said that government is supposed to be of the people, by the people, and for the people. Please listen to these people tonight. And the people who are not gonna speak, there's a silent majority that will not get up and speak. I think that these people want to say they don't want it, they oppose the permit, and like I said, representing the town of Broussard, our mayor's gotten up and spoke, the council is opposed, and the people in the town of Broussard are opposed. I am also personally opposed to you all giving this company a permit. Thank you all. And thank you all for coming tonight.
My name is Stephen Sonnier. I'm a city councilman, District One, New Iberia. I'm also a member of the Tri-Parish Solid Waste Committee. I'm here to urge you to deny the permit for Waste Management. And the reasons I'm here are because the people I represent are my family, my district, and my children, and the children that are yet to come. We're talking about our drinking water. We're talking about something that once is broken, we can't fix. Once we move forward, we can't go backwards. Once you grant this permit, Waste Management will not take a step backwards. I urge you, I plead with you, please reject this permit. It's our future. It's my children's future. It's my grandchildren's future. Please, please, please reject this permit. Thank you.
You've heard the science. You understand why this landfill will pollute our drinking water. Now, political action needs to be taken. It is important for everyone to call their representatives, call their senators, call the governor, and call the DEQ, and let them all know how you feel about a national landfill sitting right on top of our drinking water. This is going to be a disaster, but we have the power to stop it. But it's gonna take every single one of you getting your telephone and making that phone call to put the people power to work to stop this landfill.
Good evening. My name is Lori Mariano. I live in Lafayette Parish at 300 Inverness Lane, Broussard, Louisiana. I was appointed to the Lafayette Parish Environmental Control Commission by Parish President Walter Como last year, summer of last year. Prior to my appointment, this council stood in opposition to the Cade Two landfill. Since the Cade Two landfill was granted its solid waste permit a year ago, local people have been circulating a petition directed to Governor Edwards, asking him to use his constitutional powers of his office to overturn and nullify the permit. I would love to read to you, into the record of this hearing, the list of people who have signed this petition. But it's huge. There's a lot of people. There are over 2,000 signatures on this petition, and there are more to come, maybe 2,000 more. I don't have the voice, I don't have the time, and we don't have all day. We, the people in Lafayette, Iberia, and St. Martin Parish are no longer telling you. We, the people, are shouting at you, and soon, we will be roaring at you, that this landfill should not be built here on top of our drinking water. The discharge of wastewater will affect our entire water system. The surface water, the groundwater, and the aquifer are intimately interconnected at the Cade Two site. That means our drinking water will be affected by the wastewater that will be discharged from the Cade Two facility. It is your duty to protect and serve us, and we, the people of Acadiana, need your protection, and we need to be served. If you don't like 2,000 angry people right now, imagine the 20,000 people on your doorstep in Baton Rouge. 20,000 people that are really mad because you, because you have allowed our sole source aquifer, our only source of drinking water, to be contaminated and polluted. It is up to you at DEQ to protect our drinking water by denying the water discharge permit for Cade Two. I would like to offer this petition to be entered into the official hearing record, and I pray that this information and all the information entered into this hearing will not be misplaced or lost. Thank you.
I'd like to say that I'm representing all of the elderly people of Acadiana, the eight parishes in Acadiana, when I speak to you in opposition to the location of the Cade Two landfill. I'd like to say just a few words about the adjacent land use. The site of the Cade Two facility is in a residential area. The site is completely surrounded by subdivisions. These subdivisions include the Dudley Menard subdivision, the Landridge Estates, the Sugar Mill subdivision, the Country Acres, Broussard Estates, Country Haven, Como Estates, Cajun Estates, Mason Royal Trailer Park, Virginia Pines Estates, and the community that I live at the junction of LA 92 and 31. The site itself, as well as the surrounding area, is considered prime residential development land. The towns of St. Martinville, Broussard, Youngsville, and Cade are located around the Cade Two site. St. Martinville is located approximately three and a half miles east of the site. The town of Broussard is located approximately three miles northwest of the site. The community of Youngsville is located approximately four and a half miles southwest of the site. And the community of Cade is located approximately one and a half miles south of the site. The proposed site is also located in close proximity to the industrial corridor along Highway 90, south of Broussard and along Highway 96. The site is also located in the immediate area of the USL Experimental Farm and Episcopal School of Acadiana. Please consider all of these factors when deciding if the proposed facility should receive a water discharge permit. Without a water discharge permit, the landfill will not become a reality. DEQ has the authority to stop the construction of the landfill by denying the water discharge permit. Please say no to the award of the permit. I have here a map showing the subdivisions of the area in the proposed American Waste landfill. It also shows the close proximity of the rejected site five years ago. I'd like to submit this to you and ask you to enter into the records. And again, I ask you on behalf of all of the people that I represent, as well as the organizations, to deny the permit to Cade Two landfill. Thank you.
My name is Paul Councilman. I am here tonight representing the Lafayette, Louisiana Field Office of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. My comments reflect the service's concern regarding the proposed water discharge permit for Waste Management's Acadiana Waste Management Facility in Cade, St. Martin Parish, Louisiana. In 1986, Congress passed the Emergency Wetlands Restoration Act to promote the conservation of the nation's wetlands, to maintain the public benefit that they provide, and to intensify wetlands protection by local, state, and federal government entities and the private sector. In response to that act, the Louisiana Office of State Parks established a committee consisting of representatives of state and federal conservation agencies to develop a wetland, a Louisiana wetlands priority conservation plan. That plan was completed in 1988, and it identified the Cypress Island tract as one of the top six wetlands in Louisiana, based on its value for fish and wildlife, its other wetland functions, and threats to its future well-being. The 14,000 acre Cypress Island tract is located just north of the Cade landfill site and received discharge from the landfill's leachate treatment system. As expressed in the past, the service is concerned about the potential adverse effects of leachate discharge on water quality and the overall biological health of Cypress Bayou, Bayou Tortue, and the adjacent Cypress Island forested wetland complex. There is ample evidence that leachate from municipal waste landfills contain toxic chemicals that is in sufficient concentration to be potentially as harmful as leachate from industrial waste landfills. The proposed leachate discharge will require a National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit from the Environmental Protection Agency. This is in accordance with Section 402 of the Federal Water Pollution Control Act of 1972. Under provisions of the Fish and Wildlife Coordination Act, EPA must consult with the Fish and Wildlife Service regarding impacts of the proposed discharge on fish and wildlife resources. Prior to issuance of the required federal permit, the EPA must consider recommendations provided by the service to reduce impact on those resources. EPA has not yet requested the service to review the federal discharge permit. When we receive the proposed permit from EPA for review, we will carefully evaluate the types and quantities of pollutants to be discharged, and the proposed methods of treatment and monitoring of the discharge. Our review will focus on the potential threat of the proposed discharge to fish and wildlife resources. Once the review is complete, we will provide our findings to EPA, along with any recommendations deemed necessary to protect fish and wildlife resources. The final decision on whether to adopt the service's recommendation will rest with the EPA. We appreciate the opportunity to provide these comments. Thank you.
My name is Bob Cornell. I'm here representing myself. I live at 400 Colonial Drive in Lafayette. I'm a geologist. I have about 25 years of experience. I've worked in most of the sedimentary basins of North and South America. I published about a dozen articles on geometry of sand bodies in the subsurface, petrophysical data interpretation, this sort of stuff. I believe I have a certain expertise in this type of matter and the processes involved, and I want to seriously object to granting this permit. I've been involved in the, this process since Cade One was applied for or rejected, when I lived near the Cade Two site. And I object on a number of ma, a number of reasons, primarily professionally as a geologist. But I'd like to register also complaints. One, the social issues of this site were never considered. It's a populated area. It's a rural area, but heavily populated. Some years ago, from aerial photos, I believe we counted 200 homes within a one-mile perimeter of this site. I think maybe Dr. White will remember more or less how many. Secondly, the irregular way that this permit was granted, as it stands now, by a judge with no expertise who totally ignored the recommendations of the, the people we, citizens of Louisiana, have hired to, to guide us in these matters. The DEQ recommended against it, and he issued the permit. This site is underlying or directly below the surface, the Chico aquifer, which we all know about. There's also above the Chico aquifer, a local system known as the Chafalaya Aquifer, being sand bodies deposited by the, an ancient Chafalaya River system, as opposed to the Chico, which was deposited by the Mississippi. This shallow reservoir of water is where most of these homes in the area get their, their well water. Practically all of them are on private wells. There's a lot of evidence, I think it was presented at the last hearing, showing that these aquifers are in direct communication, hydraulic communication with the surface water, with the Chafalaya River system. As water rises and falls in the Chafalaya, it rises and falls in these wells and in Cypress Bayou system. So, gentlemen, I'd like to hardly recommend in So, gentlemen, I'd like to heartily recommend and propose to you that the DEQ makes a very serious, very thorough study of the system along Cypress Bayou, La Salle Creek, in this area, to verify whether or not this aquifer system, a Chafalaya, or Chico, whichever, outcrops, actually outcrops, or is very near the subsurface of the Cypress Bayou. And I'm sure you'll find that it does. Lastly, I'd like to point out in the handout that you gave out at the door, the first full paragraph on page two, you're in fact stating that the Vermillion River can't even support its own designated use due to pollution, in fact. And here, we are considering a permit to further pollute the river, in effect. And not only the river, the Vermillion River, but as we've seen the last few months, when we've had very heavy rainfalls and unusual distribution, these rivers run backwards. My office is on the Vermillion in Lafayette, and twice this year, I see the Vermillion River running backwards. It's also well-established, the Cypress Bayou also can run backwards. Therefore, we pollute the Teche system, the Vermillion system, the Cypress Island wetlands, all the way back up to the Lake Martin area, which we've just granted some money to try to restore, again, I may add. Gentlemen, please consider these recommendations, and thank you for your time.
And I first got acquainted with this property in 1947, where the Waste Management wants to locate now. I lived on that farm for 10 years. And the first year I moved there, it's high land, it's very high land. I came from the patchy real area, which is low land and marsh land. And after I was there a couple of weeks, I could see the water would come out the ground in the low spots. The water would actually come out the ground. When I came there, it was on January 1st, and all the mills were running around, the sugar mills were running, they had a sugar mill at Cade, the Smee's. They had one in Youngsville, the Youngs Industry, and they had one in Broussard with the BO Sugar Mill, and they had one at St. John, and they had one at Beards in St. Martinville, and the Iberia Co-op was in operation. But after I was there a few weeks, on the low land on that farm, the water would come out the ground. And the neighboring farm, Honest Honore, a little bit further south, it had an artesian well that would go dry. In the wintertime, when the mills were running, the artesian well would stop running. And four or five days after grinding would stop, the water would start running again. And a lot of the colored people would come down and get water to drink. It was soft water. And today, I went to meet one of these old friends of mine. She's 87 years old, and I asked her if she remembered going to get water. She said, "Oh, yes, I remember." And she said, "We used to go get water by the bucket full, because when we washed our white clothes, it would come out white, and the water was soft." And I just want to say that the aquifer covers a big, big area, and I really believe that if we put anything that'll get into that land later on, like Mr. Nelson said, the crawfish might cut your tank or your liner, whatever it is, it would detrimental to this area. I thank you all very much.
My name is Mike Cooper. I reside at 503 St. Louis in Lafayette. On May 11th, 1993, the United States Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration, issued a letter to the Director of the Acadiana Regional Airport concerning the Cade II landfill. The FAA stated that each landfill not constructed prior to the new DEQ Solid Waste Regulations will require a Federal Aviation Administration review as part of this application. The FAA further states that Waste Management is not contacted the FAA for a review of the Cade II landfill. The Airport Director of the Acadiana Regional Airport wrote a letter on May 18th, 1993, notifying Secretary Midbo of the concerns of its airport authority with the location of proposed landfill 4.3 miles north of the approach end of Runway 16. The airport authority states that this is in violation of FAA Regulation 520.5A. A request was made that future permitting activities at the Cade II site be accompanied by the appropriate FAA review and compliance with FAA Order 5200.5A dated January 31st, 1990. Since the solid waste process for the Cade II landfill is not yet complete and is lacking the FAA review portion of the process, the application for a wastewater discharge permit does not include an FAA review. The DEQ Office of Water Resources should suspend the water discharge permit process until the FAA review process is complete on both the solid waste and the water quality portions of the site. A copy of the FAA letter and the Acadiana Regional Airport should be included in this waste discharge file for the Cade II site. I would like to present a copy of both letters for the file. Thank you.
I would urge you to call the number on the screen and voice your opinion about the Cade II landfill. I don't know if you're aware of just what this thing is about, but let me just give you a little brief insight about Cade II. It's a dump, a garbage dump, that is being proposed for our area. It would be placed right over the Chico Aquifer. I understand that there's only three feet of clay that would separate the dump from the aquifer. So I think it's very, very important that you call, and let's let Waste Management know that we do not want a dump in our neighborhood. We don't want our water system polluted. We don't want it poisoned, not only for ourselves, but for our children. I would urge you to call the number on the screen and make your voices heard. It's time for action.
Before reading this letter, I'd like to say that our bishop is very concerned about the poor, the children, and those who have nobody else to speak for them in this matter. Dear people of Acadiana, I regret, due to a scheduling conflict, being unable to be present for the hearing regarding permits for the waste storage and disposal facility located near Cade. I feel that duty as a citizen of this state compels me to speak on behalf of those who cannot nor will not speak for themselves, expressing their concern regarding the location of this site. Recognizing that Waste Management and disposal is and will be an ongoing concern in our society, nevertheless, I speak with profound regret in regards to the location of this site. It will knowingly be located in an area continuing to suffer the devastation of Hurricane Andrew and result in fowling and pollution of waterways, marshes, swamps, and productive farmland. The desire to locate this landfill above an aquifer is distressing and displays a lack of concern for residents in the surrounding area who have no alternative but to depend upon surface water to supply their needs. If the drainage as proposed is approved, water from the waste facility will be released into a fragile ecosystem already under attack from abuse and misuse. The bayou into which the drain will be emptied flows directly behind Episcopal School of Acadiana, and thereby, to some degree, threatens the continued existence and prosperity of that institution, not to mention the lives and welfares of the families living in that area. It is my sincere hope and prayer that those responsible, both in state and local government and in the executive branch of Waste Management, will make every effort to ensure the continued well-being of those individuals living and learning around the proposed site. On behalf of the people of the Diocese of Western Louisiana, and with concern for all those citizens of Acadiana, I remain faithfully. Robert J. Hargrove, Bishop, Episcopal Diocese of Western Louisiana.
My name is Phil Bear. I live at 1518 Jade Duchamp Road. I'm a resident of St. Martin Parish. I've lived on the land on either side of this dump site for the past 19 years. Many of the people in the area have dug ponds, only to find out that there's not enough clay to hold water in them. Right now, I know of at least three ponds in the immediate area that have leaked. Steve Gerard, who lives on Donnell Road, which is directly across Cypress Bayou, is fighting this problem right now. My father, who lives, Philip J. Bear, who lives on Cypress Bayou itself, also is having the same problem. They dig ponds, only to find out they don't hold water. They have to go back, re-dig them, re-put clay in them. Or my father-in-law, who lives on Pierre Washington Road, which is the next road over, put gel in his to stop the leak. If these ponds won't hold water, what about the waste sediment pond and anything that leaks through the liner in the dump itself? As far as pumping water into Bayou La Salle and Cypress Bayou, you need to look at the legalities. If you let Waste Management pump the amount of water they want to, you will flood a lot of these people's land. This land, with a one-inch rain floods. And if you don't believe me, you need to come to my father's house after a rain. It's on Donnell Road, directly at the end. There's a blueberry farm there. You can't miss it. Not to mention the erosion that this will cause with moving water all the time, it will also have an effect on alligators and other game fish in Cypress Bayou and Bayou La Salle, which is full of them, my frog in there, so I know for a fact. My father's property line and others on Donnell Road go to the middle of Cypress Bayou. He is here, but wishes not to talk, so I'm talking for him. He does not want Waste Management's runoff coming through his property, and neither do his neighbors. So I don't know if that's legal to do or not. But I have checked on it, and his property line goes to the middle of that bayou, so, I mean, he has a little bit of say-so. You are the people in our state who are supposed to stop this kind of pollution and corruption. We have proved time and time again that this is an unsafe site, but Waste Management's lawyers seem to be able to do something to change the people higher up in government's mind. When Judge Redmond made this decision to give Waste Management this permit, I felt it was DEQ's duty to step in and say that issuing a permit is our job, not a judge's. This is what you people are paid to do. The evidence will be put in your hands tonight to say no to a discharge permit. Do the right thing for the state. Say no. What happens when it rains and the ponds overflow? Look at the permit again. Figure how deep Waste Management would dig to put the liner, then figure out how much clay is left. This hearing should not even be happening. DEQ turned down another site in the area because it was unsafe, yet we are looking at letting them put one here. You people need to get your priorities straight and stand up to Waste Management's lawyers and say no. Find a more suitable place. All that's going to happen is, if this landfill is built, someone will end up getting hurt on one side or the other. The people are mad. When they get mad, they're going to fight. And, you know, and that's what it's going to all boil down to, and I don't think any of this needs to happen. Thank you.
I would like to preface my remarks by saying I fully endorse the remarks that will be made later on this evening by Dr. Brian Locke. I have seen his presentation at a Lafayette Geological Society meeting and also on television a couple of years ago. Waste Management has asked DEQ to allow them to pump up to 2,708 gallons per minute of treated leachate into Cypress Bayou. This amount was calculated as the greatest possible amount of rainfall that could happen in this area. In other words, a flood. Now they've told people they don't actually intend to discharge that much, but they've asked for permission to do it just the same. The question is why? The answer is so that they have legal permission to flood us all in case of hurricane or other flooding. With this permit, they would have no liability if neighboring property was three feet deep in water that had not been treated in all the ponds they talk about, but merely runs off the garbage and onto the neighbor's land in one of our torrential downpours. They will be protected by DEQ's license to flood their neighbors. They say it's just rainwater, just like what falls on the site today. But today, rainwater on the site isn't contaminated by garbage and by leachate overflowing from these settlement ponds. Get real. If you pour water through coffee grounds, you have coffee, not water. What kind of attitude does this show? Do they want a flood to come within their permit requirements? Does it show concern for the environment or the health of their neighbors? After all, they might have put an honest figure to it, a figure based on the maximum that they thought they might actually discharge in the course of normal operations. Instead, they pull the cynical, self-serving maneuver. With this kind of attitude written into their application, how can we trust them to monitor their discharge, or maintain and read their monitoring wells, or direct or repair leaks, or any of the other things that they promised to do in their application? They like to say that these promises can be enforced against them, but only by a long, drawn-out, expensive legal process that can only begin when we, the citizens, detect a problem because our health is already being affected. Before I end, I want to also say that I am representing Episcopal School of Acadiana at Cade. I have been on the board for 17 years and was one of the members of the founding board, and Episcopal School of Acadiana also is very close to my heart. Please deny this permit. Thank you.
I have a PhD in geology from Cambridge University in 1969. I've spent my life since then as an active geologist. I've been concerned with the geology of this particular site for some five years now. I'm also a Lafayette parish representative on the Tri-Parish Solid Waste Commission. I have a number of concerns here, which are essentially geological concerns. My residence is in the middle of the city of Lafayette. I'm not expressing the NIMBY approach here. I'm not concerned because it's going to be in my backyard. I'm concerned because I see here a very serious threat to the aquifer. And this brings me to an important point. The hearing here is to consider waste discharge, and I feel that you may be under a temptation to feel that a discussion of the site geology and the siting process is beyond the scope of your hearing. I would like to make two points in that respect. Firstly, the surface water and the subsurface water are very directly connected with one another. During times of flood, the surface water is recharging the aquifer in this area. During times of drought, the subsurface waters are recharging, excuse me, during times of drought, yes, the subsurface waters are recharging the surface water. So the two are directly related. There's another issue, which is more of a legal issue, in that when the site permit was being considered by Judge Redmond, apparently DEQ had mislaid, or somehow these various geological documents were not available for Judge Redmond, and therefore, that permit did not consider these very crucial factors in their decision. And therefore, I think it's very appropriate, in fact, necessary, for you to take into account the geological problems with this particular site. If I had an hour, I'd give you my talk about the geology, which many people have already referred to, and at 5:00 in the morning, perhaps we'll get to that point where you might want me to do that, but I rather doubt it. Let me just stress a few points about the geology. First of all, if you pick up any textbook in hydrology and read sections about landfill siting, the first statement that's always made is that the siting of a landfill should start with a consideration of geological factors, and the site should be selected which has the least likelihood of damaging groundwater resources. Clearly, that has not been the approach in this case. In fact, reading through the very voluminous permit applications submitted by Waste Management for the site permit, there is no visible sign of geological input. It seems that most of the data has been compiled by engineers, and there's a very different way that engineers deal with these numbers and this information compared to the way a geologist considers them. Engineers tend to try to simplify so that they can quantify and put numbers into equations, whereas geologists are much more aware of the very complex nature of natural systems. As I say, there seems to be very little geological insight in the permit application. As you've heard repeatedly, the aquifer itself is very close to the surface. There's very little in the way of natural protection for that aquifer. This opinion has been expressed by me in several public forums, and I also have a paper in press with the Gulf Coast Association of Geological Societies on the Cade landfill site and the geology of that site, and I've given you a copy of the manuscript of that paper. In that manuscript, I've outlined in much more detail the geological problems. I'm not the only geologist, however, to have looked at this situation. As part of the permit application, DEQ submitted the permit application to the Geological Survey of Louisiana, and Mr. Brad Hanson is with us tonight, was one of the people that looked at that, and he was similarly very disturbed by the geological failings of this site. There are a number of other geologists who've looked at this, and they've come up with very similar opinions. I've not yet heard Waste Management produce a geologist who will say this site is geologically safe. Waste Management rather will take attention away from the geology and emphasize to you the technical qualities of the liner system. And there seems to be every reason to believe that this is technically a very good liner system, but undoubtedly, there is a strong record for failure of artificial liners. And the ideal way to tackle a problem such as this in siting a landfill is to choose a place where a combination of good artificial liners with good, sound geological protection gives one a chance of preserving the aquifer. I would therefore ask you to reject this permit application, the water discharge permit application. Pat Martin made- Pat Martin made a statement to you earlier. He said you have a very difficult decision here. I agree with Pat on almost everything except that statement. I think you have a very simple decision here. Please reject this permit application.
On December 7th, 1992, Mr. J. Dale Givens, Assistant Secretary of the Office of Water Resources, sent a letter to the Honorable Sidney Mae Durand concerning the Cade II landfill. In the letter, Mr. Givens states that the Office of Water Resources is aware of the legal matters concerning the Cade II landfill. He further states that an LWDPS permit must be obtained from the Office of Water Resources. This permit must be obtained prior to the construction and operation of the facility. Mr. Givens then states, "This office does not intend to issue any permit or construction variance prior to the resolution of the legal matters." Since the legal matters on the solid waste permit are still pending, DEQ should stand by the statement of Mr. Givens and not issue the water discharge permit until all the legal issues are resolved. I would like to submit a copy of Mr. Givens' letter for the record. Thank you.
My name is Bob Boers. I am a resident at 103 Riviera Court, Broussard, approximately one mile, as the crow flies from this proposed location. I also happen to be legal counsel for War on Waste. First thing I would like to do is ask you that we not have to go farther than the public hearing we have tonight, and that a decision be rendered by the department by which this permit is denied, based on this hearing alone. However, should the department feel that it is necessary to go beyond a summary denial of this permit application, War on Waste formally requests an adjudicatory hearing encompassing all facets of this hearing to be held before the department on a date set by the Administrative Hearings Division. I'd like to lay a little foundation here. We've heard a lot of comments tonight. Dr. Locke speaks quite eloquently. His writings speak more eloquently of the dangers that are faced by this facility in contaminating the groundwater of this area. We will be filing written comments, which hopefully will be as eloquent as Dr. Locke, but it is very difficult to say in fine rhetoric that locating a facility in this area is a damn stupid idea. But I got to deal with this stupid stuff. And one of the things I want to take a look at tonight is what we are trying to permit. What we're trying to permit are discharges associated with this site. Particularly, I would like to draw your attention to discharges that will come from this site that will not be treated. Now, no one sitting in this room, and no one Waste can hire, will tell you this facility will not leak. And why is this a stupid site? Because where is the bottom of this facility located? In the upper sands of the Chico Aquifer. When they find a leak in the leak detection system, where is it? It's already in the aquifer. This is a slam dunk. This is a no-brainer. The contamination will be there. Now, when I look at your regulations, it tells me that discharge means, we go through the rhetoric, the placing, releasing, spilling, percolating, draining, pumping, leaking, seeping, emitting, disposing, bypassing, or other escaping of pollutants into the surface or groundwater as a result of an act or omission, or the placing of pollutants into barrels or similar containers under conditions that leaking, seeping, draining, or escaping of the pollutants can be reasonably anticipated. I think it is safe to say, from the evidence that you have heard, the evidence that you will hear, that it can be reasonably anticipated that there will be seepage of contaminants into the Chico Aquifer, which contaminants will not be treated, which contaminants will go directly through this facility into the aquifer and won't be located until they are already there. Then I look at your regulations, and they tell me that an individual discharger or other interested person, that's me and that's my client, may submit evidence to the permitting authority that factors relating to the equipment or facilities involved, the processes applied, or other factors related to the discharger are fundamentally different from the factors considered in the establishment of effluent limitations. I've looked at the effluent limitations here. They're based on treated water. This department has an obligation to protect the groundwater. What I'm talking to you about right now is untreated discharges, which will be going through this facility directly into the Chico Aquifer. The limits that you have put in this particular permit application assume that the sediment basin will work, that through dilution, which is their solution to pollution, they will be able to bring down the limits to a level that you find acceptable. What they ignore is that this particular location is the most god-awful wrong place in the entire parish they could pick to put this, and it is gonna have direct communication between the Chico Aquifer and all of the materials that are placed in that landfill. And that the underliner lying under the leachate collection system is going to be spewing contaminants into the Chico Aquifer that will be then located by the leak detection system, which happens to sit in the upper sand of the aquifer. It's a little too late at that point. Now, the other thing... Hold on, folks. I'm trying to limit it to five minutes. The other thing that we are looking at here is the fact that the Dravot decision tells your division that they must look at all facets of the IT decision, the Save Ourselves decision. I think you will find, if you look at the record on this, that yes, Judge Redmond granted the permit they requested from the Solid Waste Division. Interestingly enough, the Solid Waste Division did not grant the permit and would not have granted the permit, and actually, their technical recommendations issued prior to Judge Redmond's decision were, "Don't grant the permit." And why didn't they want the permit granted? Because there's direct communication between the Chico Aquifer and the base of this landfill. Consequently, when this division looks at the IT aspects, do the cost benefits outweigh this? Are there suitable alternatives and all of the other intricacies that go into that decision? You must not only take it from the limited myopic curvy of what the Water Quality Division does, but you must look at the whole panorama of this, and you must look at whether or not this site is the best alternative location that could be chosen for this particular facility, notwithstanding anything Judge Redmond has done over the negative recommendation of the Solid Waste Division. What you must try to determine is whether or not they have complied with all of the facets for locating this site, independent of anything else that has happened historically. And I say you will find that practically any site in this parish would be better than the site they have chosen. Now...
Bob, I hate to interrupt your train of thought, but you're past your five minutes.
All right, all right. Again, I reiterate that should we go beyond this, my one request is that you give us an adjudicatory hearing, and you allow us to present to you in that forum detailed information that will show you how obvious this decision is. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have... The statement I'm going to make right now is of a more or less legalistic nature. What I'm going to... What I would like to ask is that when the evening is over and everyone has spoken, and you usually grant at that time the opportunity to make further remarks, I'd like to make remarks of another character. On June 7th, 1993, acting as co-chairman of War on Waste, I wrote to DEQ Secretary Kai Midbo, asking that Secretary Midbo and Assistant Secretary John Dale Givens be recused from any action in connection with the granting or denying of the wastewater permit for Cade II. I further requested that all action on this permit be suspended until the legal issues raised by the War on Waste appeal of the solid waste permit are resolved. I enclosed in support of these requests an affidavit by Mary Tutwiler asserting, among other things, that John Dale Givens told her that, quote, "He thought he would have to grant the permit," and that Mrs. Tutwiler could probably have him recused for saying that, end quote. On the same day, Secretary Midbo told Mrs. Tutwiler, according to her affidavit, that, quote, "There was nothing in Waste Management's application that would keep him from issuing the water permit," end quote. I'd point out parenthetically that that, of course, is before there has been a hearing or submission of evidence. Both men referred to fears that Waste Management might sue the department. On June 24th, Secretary Midbo replied to my request by refusing both of the recusals and the delay. He again cited, quoting his letter, "risk of litigation," as, end quote, "as a factor in his decision." On June 25th, I replied to Secretary Midbo with a formal demand for an adjudicatory hearing on both the recusal and the request for the stay. Obviously, War on Waste has been guided by the precedent of Secretary Tomplay's recusal. Dr. Tomplay was found to have made certain statements, which, quoting from that judgment, "which eliminated appearance of complete fairness and objectivity." Appearance of complete fairness and objectivity. And that it was, quote, "impossible for Dr. Tomplay to conduct the remainder of the application proceedings in an atmosphere presenting an appearance of complete fairness." In a matter of Rollins Environmental Service Incorporated, it was judged that, quote, "disqualification is appropriate for the administrative decision-maker who has prejudged the adjudicative facts in dispute," end quote. War on Waste regards statements which predict the outcome of this permit process and which offer a judgment that the application contains no obstacle to granting the permit to be classic examples of the kind of prejudgment indicated in the Rollins case. We therefore regard an adjudicatory hearing on these matters as essential to, again quoting the Tomplay case, "enforce our right to have a fair hearing by a fair and impartial hearing officer," end quote. I wish to have these matters incorporated in the record of this hearing, and I submit a written copy of the foregoing remarks and copies of the aforementioned correspondence between myself and Secretary Midbo, and a copy of Mary Tutwiler's affidavit. Thank you.
Thank you.
The updated discharge permit application submitted by Waste Management on February 12th, 1993, contained responses to the environmental impact questionnaire in Section 4 of Form SCC-2. In a letter dated May 27th, 1993, from Mr. J. Dale Givens, Assistant Secretary of the Office of Water Resources of the DEQ, to Gerard Durand, Parish Administration of the St. Martin Parish Police Jury, Mr. Givens stated, "The courts have determined that the department is responsible for evaluating and protecting the environment beyond the scope of the regulations. In an effort to address this responsibility, an environmental impact questionnaire is required as part of the application for both the LWDPS permit and the solid waste permit. I would like to request that the DEQ Office of Water Resources take the responsibility for evaluating and protecting the environment seriously and consider all of the information presented by the citizens here tonight when making that portion of your decision. The environmental impact form was answered by Waste Management by referring to the IT decision responses provided in Part 1 of the Solid Waste Permit Application. The reference document was the site selection and response to the IT decision for the Acadiana Waste Management Facility in St. Martin Parish dated November 1988. The November 1988 document contains an introduction which covers more than two pages. The information contained in the two pages of the introduction is outdated and thus contains information not applicable to the situation at hand. The first paragraph of the introduction states, "There is presently only one solid waste landfill serving the tri-parish area of Lafayette Parish and Iberia Parish. As of June 1st, 1988, the City of Lafayette landfill has been closed, and the City of New Iberia has become the designated disposal site for this area of Louisiana. The Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality has approved this plan for a maximum of one year. The purpose of this plan is to provide sufficient funds for the proper closure of the New Iberia dump, while giving the Acadiana region sufficient time to institute recycling programs and identify alternative solid waste disposal options. American Waste and Pollution Control Company has been active for several years in selecting and searching for an acceptable site to develop for the management of solid waste in the area. The need for relief in the form of a new environmentally sound waste management and disposal facility is evident, and the timeframe for development grows increasingly short. This paragraph is almost five years old and does not reflect the current state of solid waste disposal. Municipal solid waste from the tri-parish area is currently being disposed of by Waste Management in the Livingston Parish landfill and by BFI and Independent Waste Haulers in the Jeff Davis Parish landfill." The introduction continues with the following statement, "To date, the Department of Environmental Quality has not promulgated any new regulations to alter the process or the consideration of permit applications. There's been no law or regulation since the promulgation of the Louisiana Solid Waste Rules and Regulations to prohibit the filing of permit applications. The State of Louisiana adopted new solid waste regulations in February 1993. Once again, the document submitted by Waste Management is not current." The introduction concludes with a lengthy paragraph concerning the one landfill they contend is the only one available for disposal of tri-parish garbage. The paragraph states, "Perhaps nowhere in Louisiana is the solid waste problem and the protection of the environment at such a crisis level. The New Iberia site is classified as an open dump under the Louisiana Solid Waste Rules and Regulations because it has no liner or leachate collection system and other engineered features for the protection of the environment. To provide for continued disposal capacity on an emergency basis, the Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality issued an order allowing the New Iberia dump to remain open for a year, July 1989. The solid waste dump has continued to operate in New Iberia for three and a half years beyond the date by which the legislature mandated closure of all open dumps. This facility has now been left as the only approved disposal site that can serve the tri-parish area. Unfortunately, the New Iberia dump does not have any of the modern features that exist for the protection of the environment. Though now closed, the City of Lafayette landfill had been allowed to increase the permitted height and operating life past that originally permitted. This site does have the basic features which help to protect the environment. While these situations exist, the department denied the AWPCC's permit application for a landfill near Cade for the reasons stated in the attached letter. This new site represents another effort to provide environmentally safe options for the management of waste, solid waste, for this reason. This information is also outdated and misrepresents the current status of solid waste disposal in the tri-parish area. It will be difficult for the Water Resources Office of DEQ to evaluate the response of the environmental impact questionnaire and make a responsible determination to protect the environment when the information contained in the response to the questionnaire is outdated and incorrect. The DEQ should deny the quest for water discharge permit based on the inappropriate responses to the environmental impact questionnaire. I thank you for your time and for your consideration. I have a copy of Mr. Givens' letter, which I'm submitting to you for the record."
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Cassie Salter. I am eight years old, and I would just like to say one thing. Please, please don't let them make our water bad, because someday I would like to have healthy children too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Mark Kwong. I live at 209 Intralaken Drive in New Iberia. I recently graduated the Episcopal School of Acadiana and affiliated them as such. I wish to submit this statement regarding the Cypress Island Swamp. The Cade II landfill site is located just south of the Cypress Island Swamp. The wastewater from the landfill will be discharged into La Salle Coulee and flow north into Cypress Bayou and the Cypress Island Swamp. Over the years, many efforts have been made by local, state, and national organizations and agencies to preserve the Cypress Island Swamp and designate the area as a wildlife management area. The Cypress Island Swamp offers a unique preservation opportunity that is currently threatened by the construction of the Cade II landfill. The swamp extends from just south of Interstate 10 between Lafayette and Brobridge down to Broussard and St. Martinville. This swamp serves as a key backwater flooding area for the Vermillion This swamp serves as a key backwater flooding area for the Vermillion River and is an ideal habitat for a variety of bottomland hardwoods, wildlife, and provides the opportunity for numerous kinds of outdoors activities and recreation. The main waterways and drainages through Cypress Island Swamp are Bayou Tortue, Bayou Capuchin, Coulee Crow, Cypress Island Coulee, La Salle Coulee, and the Evangeline and Ruth Canal. Flows are generally to the north into the Vermillion River, however. Surface flows can vary depending on hydrological conditions. The water waste discharge from the landfill will be discharged into La Salle Coulee and flow through Cypress Island Swamp on its way to the Vermillion River or the Bayou Tesh. The utilization of a wetland system of such importance as a discharge system for a large solid waste landfill is totally unacceptable. I would like to request that you deny the waste water discharge permit on the basis of potential environmental impact to the Cypress Island Swamp. I would also like to submit a map outlining the Cypress Island Swamp system and its relationship to the Cade II landfill and documents which illustrate the ongoing efforts to preserve Cypress Island Swamp. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Marion Neves. I live at 1518 K Duchamp Road, Broussard. I am a real estate broker specializing in property management. I oppose you issuing this permit, not only because of the water supply to our homes, but also of the fact that this will destroy the value of our property. We've all seen the advertisement Waste Management has on TV, which displays a beautiful golf course. And it seems to make you think that this golf course and this landfill will be the most wonderful thing an owner can have in their backyard. But I can tell you presently, this proposed landfill has already destroyed the value of our property in the area in the Cade II. Margaret Harold, who owns the Maison Royale Mobile Home Park, had a potential buyer for her property, a Mr. Joe Earhart from New Iberia. However, Premier Bank elected not to supply the funds for this property, and I would like to read you what Premier Bank told him. "First and perhaps foremost, my decision to refrain from financing the project is due to its location and the proximity that the site could have to the proposed Cade II landfill. While I realize that the landfill may never become a reality in this area, the mere fact that the possibility exists is a sufficient reason for the bank to choose not to finance this project. Should the landfill be developed in that area, it could become impossible for you to attract residents. And unfortunately, for the present owner, I feel the prospect of Cade II landfill will probably make it very difficult for her to find a buyer. So as you see, just the mere prospect of this landfill has already destroyed the values of our property as well as our water supply if it comes in. Doesn't this matter to DEQ? You're here to protect the citizens of this area. Through this whole process, it has appeared that Waste Management's feelings have been treated with TLC, and we, the citizens who you are to protect, have been put on the wayside. I can appreciate the fact that Waste Management is concerned with their bottom line dollar and the Cade II site area being in the tri-parish sector. But we too, as citizens, are concerned about our bottom line and our families. Please reconsider this permit and do not issue it. Thank you."
You've heard the science. You understand why this landfill will pollute our drinking water. Now, political action needs to be taken. It is important for everyone to call their representatives, call their senators, call the governor, and call the DEQ, and let them all know how you feel about a national landfill sitting right on top of our drinking water. This is going to be a disaster, but we have the power to stop it. But it's going to take every single one of you getting your telephone and making that phone call to put the people power to work to stop this landfill.
My name is John Bates. I reside at 1518 Duchamp Road. I'd like to start by addressing my statement to the representatives of DEQ. I work for an engine distributor that's located within a half mile of the opposed landfill. We were approached by a DEQ representative approximately two weeks ago, and were told we have to install a water recycling system so we can continue to use our steam cleaning pressure washer. The DEQ representative told me that this area is on top of the aquifer. The water table is approximately 30 to 60 feet beneath the ground surface. So I asked now, the people of DEQ, why would you allow such an environmentally destructive crime to take place? If this landfill is allowed to open, you know as well as I do that all kinds of toxins will be dumped at this site. It happens every day, whether it be by people who don't care or field-related companies, but that's besides the point. We here tonight do care. So now Waste Management says, "No, that won't happen. What are you going to do? Sort through all the trash and garbage before it's dumped?" I really don't think so. Just dump it and cover it up. Nobody will know. All this area around the opposed landfill depends on water wells for everyday water needs. Within a very short period of time, this water will be contaminated. I ask you now, what gives you the right to tell me to install a $20,000 water recycling system for water that's already going to be contaminated? Our government's do-as-I-say, not-as-I-do attitude has got to stop. Just goes to show the criminal activities and corruption within our government, its elected officials that don't even care, and our governmental agencies such as DEQ that are supposed to make sure this type of crime against the people of this area do not take place. We do not want the landfill. Thank you.
One big charade, an orchestrated event in effect to appease the public before the dirty deed is done. And there's no doubt in my mind that there's been a compromise within the Department of Environmental Quality, and it is predispositioned to grant a permit. This permit granted is for a terrorist-like assault on the Chico Aquifer and subsequently the people of southwest Louisiana, which number several hundred thousand, a small army. Now with that out of the way, let me throw some more facts at you. Experts in the fields of geology, hydrology, and chemistry, with irrefutable credentials and reputations, have said that the geology in this area is below the standard for landfill application, and once the leach aid and discharge contaminants enter the aquifer, natural movements and vacuums caused by municipal water supplies will drag these poisons throughout the entire aquifer system, toxically engulfing those several hundred people I was talking about, several hundred thousand, excuse me, people I was talking about. This water discharge permit being sought for is up to 20,000 gallons per minute. In this high rainfall area, it is foreseeable that that amount of discharge could occur. At that rate, contaminants will flow directly into our waterways. There's no way that that water can be cleaned at that rate. Even at normal discharge rates, deadly carcinogens such as lead, arsenic, mercury, an array of heavy metals and toxins will be dumped into our waterways. Routinely dumped at that. The bottoms of these waterways are sea level and below sea level entrances to the aquifer with no synthetic liners or built-in safeguards. The fish and game of southwest Louisiana wetlands will be saturated with toxins, therefore poisoning all those who eat from the bayous. To grant a water discharge permit for this facility is a violation of my constitutional rights and the constitutional rights of all those who drink from the Chico Aquifer. The introduction to the Constitution of the United States states the intention of the Constitution, of which one of the facets is to promote the general welfare. You show me where putting this atrocity over a water source is going to promote the general welfare. I don't believe. If DEQ Water Discharge Division wants to become part of the criminal conspiracy that's now going on in Cade, grant Waste Management that permit. But if DEQ wants to do what it was designed to do, to protect the environment that supports human life, then tell Waste Management, "No permit for this fragile ecological area, not now, not tomorrow, not ever. You are sworn to do so under the Constitution of the United States." Now to get to the snake that entered the Garden of Eden. Waste Management's paid advertiser, who's paid very well to come here, none of us are paid. In fact, most of us lost money today to come here. They bragged about their great awards and all the wonderful facilities. Well, there's a booklet back there about this thick with a trail of fines clean across this country, from Milwaukee to San Diego, showing them being fined for contaminating water, polluting the air with their facilities. Have y'all looked at this? I think it's time. The people of Louisiana have suffered through elected officials and appointed officials who have stole the bread from our children's mouths and have sent them to bed hungry. But if you poison our children, we'll consume you with hellfire. Thank you.
My name is Kay Cunningham, and I'm a lifelong resident of Acadiana. I had not planned to speak tonight, but I do plan to try to be succinct. And I guess most of my remarks would be directed to Mr. Givens. I have two daughters that go to the Episcopal School of Acadiana, and one of them is here tonight. We have followed this whole process for a long time. We've gone to hearings, and we've gone to these public meetings. We sat here almost all night a few years ago, listening to facts and figures and plans and schemes. But the thing that has caused me to come forth tonight is to say to you and to everybody here that there is no right way to do a wrong thing, and this is a wrong thing. It just shouldn't go on. Like Ms. Durand said, let us put an end to it. Go on and say no, and let it be the end of it. We don't, nobody needs to spend their time fighting over something like this. That's just, that's just, it's as simple as that. Like one of the men said tonight, "It's not really that hard a decision. You know what you ought to do, and if you don't do it, shame on you."
For many of the people in this room, coming to a DEQ hearing to defeat a landfill in Cade has become an unwelcome tradition. After all, there was Cade I, and this is the third hearing on Cade II. I'm including the one DEQ lost. It was the third largest hearing in DEQ history before tonight, but they lost it. After the first hearing, DEQ got it right. Here's what DEQ Secretary Martha Madden wrote in denying the permit for Cade I. "The proximity to the top of the Chico Aquifer System at the depths of excavation proposed for this facility would force our reliance on manufactured liners to prevent groundwater contamination. While this method is acceptable under the regulations, a site where the clays overlying the aquifer are of greater thickness would provide a higher degree of protection for this important source of drinking water. The general geologic conditions at the site are such that engineered solutions are required to overcome natural drawbacks to these conditions. A site where the soils provide more stability and the natural soils provide a greater degree of protection to the groundwater would be preferable." DEQ doesn't even need to write a new letter. Secretary Madden described this proposal and its fatal flaws perfectly. The citizens pointed this out at Cade II sighting hearing, but Waste Management got the whole DEQ sighting review process thrown out on technicality. Later, DEQ itself lost the entire hearing and everything submitted with it. Next, DEQ held the solid waste permit hearing. We all came and told Martha Madden's story again at the biggest hearing ever in DEQ history. Once more, Waste Management derailed a DEQ review process by getting Secretary Tomplay recused. Somehow in the process, the relevant geological information disappeared. Now here we are again. I don't know how many thousands of people have to speak at how many enormous hearings before DEQ again sees the simple truth it saw so clearly in Martha Madden's time. You're making a mockery of the principle of public participation and comment and undermining your own DEQ processes when you lose a public hearing and then treat the decision based on that depleted record as if it were valid. Save the integrity of your own department and deny this permit.
My name is Teresa Privat. I'm a resident of Brobridge. I live out near Lake Martin. I'm a member of the Lake Martin Advisory Council, and tonight I'm here to urge you to reject this application for a water discharge permit. We in St. Martin Parish have something to offer tourists and local people that cannot be found any other place, a unique area offering ecological treasures. The Lake Martin Cypress Island area is one of the few remaining swamps in Louisiana to remain free-flowing and unleveled. This area has basically been untouched by development in the true sense of the word swamp. This area serves as a wetlands reservoir where runoff from storms and heavy rainfall accumulates and provides drainage for St. Martin and Lafayette Parishes. This area has been a birdwatcher's paradise for many years. The bodies of water and clean air provide an ideal habitat for local and migratory birds, where food is plentiful and forests provide shelter and safety. The area supports one of the largest white ibis rookeries in the world, a blue heron, a night heron rookery, and an egret rookery. Sections of old-growth Cypress trees remain untouched, where Cypress knees measure over 10 feet tall. Hunters can attest to the numbers of ducks, squirrels, and rabbits that provide good hunting each year. This area is also home to an increasing population of deer and alligators. Fishermen are delighted by the numbers of bream, saqalay, and bass that are there for the catching. As you see, this area offers a small pocket of natural treasures that need to be protected if we, our children, and our grandchildren are to continue enjoying them. What concerns me most tonight is that the water discharge permit will allow the release of a virtual soup of chemicals, harmful chemicals, into La Salle Coulee, then into Cypress Bayou, then into Bayou Tortue, then into the Vermillion. These bodies of water flow through and overflow into the Cypress Island Swamp. We cannot afford to jeopardize this natural treasure. It is up to you to ensure that this area does not become a casualty of this mix of chemicals, the combination of which makes this truly frightening. Let's not go the way of others who have sacrificed natural treasures only to realize too late that the damage done cannot be reversed and the treasures have been lost forever. Please do the right thing tonight. Deny this application, and in so doing, protect us and prevent this area from becoming another unfortunate wasteland. Thank you.
I'm Brad Hanson. I'm the, I'm a senior research geologist with the Louisiana Geological Survey. I'm also the chief of the Water Resources and Environmental Mapping section of the survey. Survey is here tonight at the request of the St. Martin Parish Police Jury. I submitted a report earlier to you on the results of a geologic investigation we did in 1990 at the request and under contract to DEQ, where we looked at the specifics of the Cade landfill in terms of the geology. The, the report that I submitted tonight is as, is as applicable to the issue before us as it was applicable to the issue in 1990. And the reason for that is really quite simple. Surface water, water in the shallow aquifers co-mingle. And we've heard that tonight from a number of different sources, and I don't think there's anybody here that would argue with that. Water flowing across the surface of the land percolates downward, and some of that reaches the aquifer. The reason the water runoff issue is so critical here tonight is because of the site g-... The reason the water runoff issue is so critical here tonight is because of the site geology. And the site geology is covered in that report. The Chico exists at a depth of about twenty feet beneath the proposed site. The top of the Chico is about six feet below the depth of the liner. The area in general is an area of complex geology, pinchouts, facies changes, sand channels, buried erosional surfaces, macro fracturing. All of these items create potential pathways for vertical migration of water, or whatever The natural confining unit that is in the permit application, which the applicant refers to as soil unit number three, or the middle clay, which has been alluded to as being continuous beneath the facility and in the general area, is not homogeneous, and it does not have the lateral continuity that's been implied. It is not impervious, and where it's present, it's a leaky, confining bed at best. And that's why the surface water discharge permit is such a critical issue in terms of the subsurface aquifers, the groundwater aquifers. We need, Department of Environmental Quality needs to exercise extreme caution and prudence when considering surface water quality issues. If I may, a personal observation. I've been involved with landfills of varying types for little over thirteen years in Louisiana. And Lord knows, we need to put our waste somewhere. Landfills, composting, recycling are all part of the equation. None of them are standalone. But we've got to be extremely careful where we put these landfills. The lady just before me quoted Martha Madden in her rejection of the Cade I landfill. The position of Cade II geologically, from a geologic perspective, is no better, and in some cases much worse, than the location of site of, of Cade I. Now I know you're a man who calls it like he sees it. Me too. There are some sites that we really need to walk away from, and this is one of them. And the reason for that is real simple. If we don't, it's gonna come back to haunt us, and that's guaranteed. Thank you.
The public opinion can make a difference. We hope that people will write and call DEQ, and especially Governor Edwards, and express their opposition to this site where there is no natural clay protection.
Hi, my name's Maryers Lewis. I live in New Iberia, and I'm a recent graduate of the Episcopal School of Acadiana. The wastewater discharge permit would allow Waste Management to discharge as much as 4.8 million gallons of wastewater per day. The wastewater would be discharged into Cypress Bayou and La Salle Coulee. These water bodies are part of segment 060801 of the Vermillion River system, which extends from the headwaters down to the intracoastal waterway. The receiving stream for the wastewater discharge has been designated by the state of Louisiana as a priority water body. A priority water body does not support the designated use as established by Louisiana Water Quality Standards. The Vermillion River segment is one of only twenty-three water body subsegments on the priority list. The Vermillion River segment has been designated by the Water Quality Standards for primary and secondary contact, recreation, and the propagation of fish and wildlife. The water quality does not support any of the designated uses. The suspected causes of the stream segment not meeting the designated uses are nutrients, organic enrichment, suspended solids, pathogens, oil, and grease, and pesticides. The suspected source of the chemicals impacting the water body are point sources of pollution from industrial and municipal facilities, non-point sources from non-irrigated crop production and irrigated crop production, urban runoff from storm sewers, and surface runoff and pollution from the activities associated with the resource extraction of petroleum. The site of a landfill in a location that would require the discharge of leachate and contaminated stormwater into a surface water stream that does not meet its designated uses is totally unacceptable. DEQ should deny the request for a wastewater discharge permit into one of twenty-three water bodies in the state on the priority list. The quality of the stream does not need to be degraded farther by the landfill permit. Say no to the wastewater discharge permit. Thank you.
It is traditional in Louisiana to listen to the wisdom of local government on local matters. You see this at the legislature when a representative comes before committee with a local bill. It practically flies off the table and onto the House or Senate floor. That is because those one hundred and forty-four legislators know that nobody knows the territory better than the local representatives. There is also a policy at DEQ to ask expressly the desires of local government about the location and type of facility that is being proposed. In the case of Cade II, this courtesy, this respect for local knowledge of what is right for a community, has been ignored. We were told that when our landfills closed, that there would be a crisis, that garbage would pile up in our streets. Is this happening today? We were told that transporting garbage to distant landfills would skyrocket the cost of our garbage contracts. Today, we have two transfer stations, and the costs now are lower than they were in 1988. We were told that we had to have a local dump. Without one, we have turned to other methods of waste reduction. We now boast the premier recycling and composting programs in the state. We've told you that we don't want to risk our drinking water, that the risk outweighs any benefit we may derive. You persist in permitting a mega-dump right over the most vulnerable site in the tri-parish area where the aquifer is closest to the surface. You are not listening to local wisdom or local government at all. I present to you the list of local governing bodies representing the people of the tri-parish area who oppose this dump. St. Martin Parish, 1987, 1988, 1993 resolutions in opposition to the Cade I and Cade II dumps. City of St. Martinville, 1988, 1993 resolutions in opposition to the Cade II dump. St. Martin Parish School Board, 1989 resolution in opposition to the Cade II dump. Town of Parks, since 1989 stands in opposition to the Cade II dump. City of Brobridge, 1993 commitment in opposition to the Cade II dump. Town of Broussard, 1992 resolution in opposition to the Cade II dump. Town of Youngsville, 1992 resolution in opposition to the Cade II dump. Lafayette Parish, 1992 resolution calling for more information and study before any permits are issued for the Cade II dump, and a 1987 resolution supporting the concept that landfill should only be permitted by the state with approval of the parish governing body in which parish it is located. City of Lafayette, 1993 letter stating that the city of Lafayette has never taken a position in support of the Cade II dump. Mayor of New Iberia, 1993 opposition to the Cade II dump. Iberia Parish, 1993 rescends all support for the Cade II dump. In effect, there is only one large body, Waste Management, who is in support of this dump. They aren't local. They aren't elected. They don't represent the people. They don't live here. They don't care anything about anything but their profit. As a state agency, who is it your duty to listen to? Who is it your duty to protect? Attached to the resolutions and statements in opposition to the dump, you would do well to read them in light of your own 1987 letter requesting local input. Then take your own advice, listen to the input of local government, deny the water permit for the Cade II dump. Here are the attachments.
My name is Donald A. Walgriff. I'm vice president of Environmental Affairs of WMX Technology and Services, Oak Brook, Illinois. WMX Technologies is the parent company of Waste Management Incorporated. The first issue that I'm going to touch on is compliance. WMX is committed to the protection of the environment, and we have taken many steps For all landfill general managers and supervisors, these courses cover regulations, environmental monitoring, design, construction, operations, and working with the local community to help facility managers track relevant activities to assure compliance with federal regulations. And timetable for any actions required over the course of a year, and assigns an individual responsible for ensuring their completion. We also have auditing teams that conduct independent environmental audits of all Waste Management facilities. While none of these assessments are required by law, we believe they are essential to
I have been privileged with the honor to present to you a statement by the Nature Conservancy tonight. The Nature Conservancy has performed extensive evaluations and investigations in the Cypress Island swamp area. The Nature Conservancy is interested in the Cypress Island due to its biological significance. Benign management in the past has protected a variety of elements that are disturbed, threatened, or gone elsewhere. There is a need now to protect this invaluable remnant in order to both prevent its destruction by unforeseen causes and to upgrade management to sustain or improve the quality of conditions when appropriate. Several natural features of Cypress Island stand out. The waiting bird nesting colony of the south end of Lake Martin is one of the largest in Louisiana. Although a number of species breed there, it is dominated by the white ibis with an estimated 20,000 nests. This may be the largest nesting concentration of white ibis in the world, and is certainly one of the most critical wildlife resources in Louisiana. Protection of Lake Martin is necessary for continued success of this colony, but protection of the surrounding wooded wetlands used as feeding grounds by the birds is equally as The forest north of Lake Martin is heavily used and needs to be safeguarded for the well-being of the birds. There are several live oak-dominated ridges in the area. This community type once dominated the natural levees aside many of the rivers and bayous of south Louisiana. These sites, dry and with rich soils, were the first ones inhabited and farmed by humans, and as a result, the community type has been drastically reduced. There is surely less than five percent of the original acreage remaining, and little of that is in a near pristine condition found on the ridges of the Cypress Island. Beyond their rarity, the sheer beauty of these live oak ridges warrants their protection. A north-south ridge northwest of Lake Martin...